Good evening Nottingham, we will start our July. Oh my gosh, the 21st, 21st Board of Selectment meeting with the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all. I used to have an actual low weather day today.
Oh, isn't it nice?
Yeah, gorgeous.
I'll take it.
Looking at it through my office window, yes, I was like, wow, it's really nice out there.
It was really nice out there, sorry Tim.
Thanks Steve, appreciate that. At least we had a weekend that was fairly dry. Approval of manifest and payroll, any questions on the accounts payable and payroll?
I'll make a motion to.
I did, I did have one question about the revision energy.
Yes.
The amounts were higher than historically, I don't know if you noticed that, it's pretty big bump up.
So we get billed quarterly for the kilowatt generation through the solar panels. Typically, I looked back historically, typically the winter months tend to be lower, anywhere in the sixteen hundred to two thousand dollar range, and that includes both the community center and the fire station. This month's bill, or this quarter's bill that we received this month was fifty-two hundred dollars, which seemed much higher, but I did look back historically to 2024, I have to do some further research back. It is in line with what we paid last year, it's probably within a couple hundred dollars, so. I have to get a better understanding for how that billing works in comparison to what we're receiving for energy savings on our ever-source bill. And, you know, once, once I get a better feeling for how that all works, I'll be able to report back to you and say like, this is, you know, we might be paying this much on a quarterly basis, but in the end, we're saving this much, but.
It's been a hot quarter.
Yeah, summer is typically.
So even though the AC's not working.
Well, no, this is from the first, this is the first quarter, right?
No, it was the second quarter, it was April, May, June.
So next, next quarter will probably be higher.
Right. Well, the AC units haven't been working for half the time, so.
Yeah, they're, they're not working as efficiently as they should.
It would just be interesting to see the analysis of how much it's costing us to pay revision.
We do have the ability, like, we have the capability to go on, there's a link on the website, I haven't looked at it for a little bit, but it can actually show like what we're generating versus what we're feeding back into the system.
Yeah.
Again, it's, it's kind of alien to me, I'm not very familiar with solar systems, so. Having adopted that, we, we kind of have to get in, we, I don't think we really have anybody that's really knowledgeable in the area that could explain it, so maybe it would be a good time to have revision come out and just do kind of another.
Explanation.
Explanation on, on what the system does.
That was my only question.
I will make a motion to approve the accounts payroll of seven twenty-two, twenty twenty-five.
Seven twenty-one.
Uh, sorry, seven twenty-one, oh, I'm reading payroll, and payroll of seven twenty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have the public minutes and non-public minutes from July seventeenth.
I did have one question on the non-public minutes. I was just curious if we need to break out the attendance portion where they weren't there, they were only there for one topic.
Okay, yeah, I can make a note that.
To clarify that.
Yeah, I can make a note that they were, I think I actually have the time written down in my handwritten notes, that they were dismisseded.
Yeah.
Whatever time that may be.
Okay. Alright, I will, any other things?
I did have a correction on the regular minutes. It was incorrectly listed on the agenda, which I believe is where the motions came from, but online, one seventy-nine and one eighty-two. The motion was made for MAP, I think it was actually MAP two forty, one forty dash four, but the correct MAP and lot was MAP twenty-four, one forty dash four, and MAP twenty-four, uh, one forty dash four.
I didn't look that detail.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, alright.
Good catch.
Yep. I will make a motion to approve the public and non-public meeting minutes for July seventeen?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Seventh.
July seventh, that was July seventh.
Seventh.
Yeah, I was like, that's not right, it's July seventh. July seventh, it was, yeah.
I will second that.
With, as amended.
Second that.
The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Reports from assigned boards, committees, departments, Mr. Welch, start with you.
Fantastic, so yeah, I mean, I, I think everything's going well. Our recycling center seems to be going well, it looks like it's been pressure washed and getting ready for some paint on, on the building, and everything seems to be running pretty smooth down there. Recreation, everything's going well. They are, yeah.
Today.
Today, very good. So, um, yeah. Recreation's doing well. Summer recs going extremely well, concerts, anybody wants to come down to a concert tomorrow night? It's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band, so. Come on down, get your groove on, it'd be nice to see more people down at the summer concert series, so. Like to see more people down there. Tomorrow night?
Tuesdays are bad. We'll make them good.
I'll be there on August fifth, definitely, I know I can make that one.
Alright, I'll go next, I guess, if you're done Steve?
I'm done.
Alright, CIP is, looks like they're still meeting in the other room. So it's over there, the, uh, the last hour. Uh, we, so that was our first meeting of the year, we started looking at PD requests and some rec requests. I guess the library also came in, but they may or may not be looking at that stuff as well as looking at what we needed to update to make sure that it's clear of how we move to a ten-year look as well as a fifteen thousand dollar capital amount instead of ten, so we bumped that up to get rid of some of the noise. Planning board did not meet two weeks ago, that meeting was canceled, and we are scheduled to meet this Wednesday. And I have not heard any news from Chief Curry, so I'm hoping that no news is good news. That's what I have.
John, can I ask how many people are on the CIP committee now, or the CIP please? Eight, or seven?
Seven, I was gonna have to count.
So there's, there's actually, there's two planning board reps, Giff Severns and Adam Ryan. Um, John is the select board rep, Donna Danis is the alternate budget committee rep, and when she's not wearing that hat, she's our public member along with Jean Reed. Susan Levinson is the school board representative, and Carol Martin is the budget committee representative. I think that's the, I don't know, I didn't use my fingers.
Thanks. Master Planning Committee, we didn't, haven't met since our last meeting, we've got two meetings scheduled, one for July thirty-first and one for August twenty-sixth. So, plug them right along.
Lisa, I haven't talked to the chief this week, I was on vacation. But I've been doing a little bit of an analysis of some of the work that they do, not necessarily crime statistics, but all of the calls that they answer. It's pretty impressive. And nothing else to say, the two new cars aren't in yet.
But they should be this week.
Very soon, yep, and then we'll be outfitted, right? And be on the road, and I'll be up to full complement again.
Yeah, how long will it take to get those fitted about?
I'm gonna say probably six to eight weeks between.
I thought it was pretty long.
Between the electronics and then the graphics, so I think what she was gonna try to do is alternate, have one do the graphics first and the electronics on the other one, just so, to minimize that.
There's two of them, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it may, may or may not be beneficial to do them together, or, so.
She told me she was kind of hoping they'd squeeze her in as a favor, but we'll see. She's hoping it wouldn't take more than a month. I think you're realistic, thinking it may be more.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very dull this week.
Ellen, you mind if we skip over you?
I was just gonna recommend that because I think it would be important to at least give Steve the chance to talk about the paving bids that we received before your public hearing starts at seven.
Yeah, sounds good. Mr. Williams, do you want to step up and we can kind of go over the bids? So we, the warrant article number twelve that passed for two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in paving, for paving projects, Deerfield Road, you're starting that now, but could we take an opportunity to go through the three different bids that we received? There's quite some difference in pricing. Could you walk us through why and what you'd recommend?
Uh, well, um, basically they just, I can't tell you why they're different. They're all, they're all bidding on the same thing. I would go with probably the size of the company and the jobs that they do and their use of taking, most likely. R and D came in at the cheapest. And even at that, we're gonna have to obviously cut off some of what I wanted to do to make it work.
I think it's based upon the warrant article, the other two. Maybe we'd have to cut off complete.
A whole bunch, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna end up with pretty much Deerfield Road and Stevens Hill Road.
Right.
And that's about it.
And I haven't looked as closely as I should have, Steve, but what was the difference between the original estimate R and D gave us and then they gave us a revised?
Yeah, they bid on what we put out.
Okay.
And it came in pretty much the same.
Okay, and you, there's no quality difference that you see?
Uh, we, we. Slight, we're doing a little less milling.
This is above my pay grades. I need to count on you.
A little less milling and a little more overlay than, than, I'm just trying to fit with what we can afford.
Okay, yeah, well, I understand, I, I'm just trying to, you know, understand myself, I don't know much about paving.
And since last year, when, when we first looked at Deerfield Road, I was kind of thinking it was all gonna need to be milled like we did the, the middle piece the year before, and really it didn't peel up too bad over the winter, too much worse than it had the year before, so. I feel a little more confident that it'll stick down and, and hold up.
Yeah, I noticed you marked certain areas.
Yeah, some spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That were worn down. Thank you.
Yeah, because they came in, they were like only about seven thousand dollars higher for those three roads, sort of, as what last year.
Oh yeah, Lucas Pond, I forgot about, we're supposed to still be doing Lucas Pond, but I'm just not gonna be able to do my little piece of, uh.
Francesca.
Francesca and Smoke Street.
Yeah.
I just don't have the money to.
Yep.
To do them. Francesca, we'll have to do a little bit of patching on it, because there are some holes that are getting kind of big, but we'll just have to do it ourselves.
Yeah, the other estimates seem really out of the ballpark.
And the other companies were asking, they could do it later and even later in the season also.
It's a new reason, okay.
They didn't want that either.
And R and D has done work for us before.
Oh yeah, yeah.
So they're a known entity.
You've been happy with their work?
Yeah. I've done paving, well, they did paving before I was here. They did paving over here for Johnny.
Yeah.
They did it for me in Deerfield.
You've been around a long time.
Yeah, and they do a good job.
Okay.
They've always been fair.
Yeah.
That's all I could ask for.
I'm assuming at some point we'll have to top coat Stevens Hill again.
Yeah, right, we're just basing it this year. Yeah, so that, that eventually, I would like to let it go maybe more than a couple of years. And then get a top on it, and ideally it's nice to do it the next year, but, you know, we've got so much catch-up to do that, you know.
Right, we don't want to let it go too long.
No, we don't, we don't lose the base.
Right.
Definitely not.
So the Pike Industries quote for the same three roads comes in about the same price. It's actually slightly cheaper than. Three thousand dollars cheaper than R and D, so if we're thinking we're.
Pike, Pike wanted to do it a month later too, though.
Yeah.
To me, that, it's a little late for it being stuck down and, you know.
When, so when would they get, like, if we said, okay, we'll go with R and D, when would they get, be able to get started?
R and, R and D was gonna do it within our time period, uh, I forget what we have, was the end of?
Anybody end of September?
September, I think it was, or mid-September or something like that, I don't remember.
Yeah, we're, we're commencing the plan award with completion now later than September first.
There we go, yeah.
Okay.
So everybody else was gonna be October first, and that to me is.
Pushing that forward.
Yeah.
A little bit, I mean, not, not. It's where we've had so much delam problems, just want to take that chance.
What are the three roads you're talking about?
Uh, Lucas Pond, Deerfield, and Stevens Hill.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The other two roads that were included were Francesca and Smoke Street. Stevens Hill. You're welcome.
Do you feel we can do those other spots in-house?
Well.
No, just patch them.
Where, where, where the base is getting hurt.
Right.
Yeah, we can patch them, yeah.
Enroll it.
But I mean, I'm not gonna patch all the, where it's delamed everywhere.
No.
On those spots that I wanted to do. But where it's, where it's getting.
It's the nasty section.
Where it's getting to where it's gonna hurt the base, yes, yeah, we'll patch those. Cost effective to go out there and patch all the, the delam, you know. Nobody hold, you know, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, you know.
So then how does that work, Ellen, with the warrant article of two hundred eighty-five thousand, if the cost of the project is two ninety-two? We'd have to figure out a way to.
We can overspend the warrant article, so we would have to find the additional money within the operating budget or cut the project short.
Okay. And so, I guess, if we were to do that, where would we cut?
So at, at the.
Jim and Sue's deal code, or?
At the two ninety-one, five twenty-five, that's still included Francesca and Smoke, so I think you figured if we removed Francesca from it, then it would bring us within.
Right.
Yeah, Francesca alone was, um. Was six thousand nine hundred and ten, so that would bring us down to below the two eighty-five.
Oh, good.
So if we just take Francesca out?
Yeah.
Do we still do?
Smoke Street?
Smoke then, or?
I don't think it accounted for Smoke, maybe.
Um, Smoke Street was sixteen thousand one thirty-five.
By taking Francesca out, we'll still have money to do Smoke.
So what we're seeing?
No, just on the updated ones.
Okay, thanks, I, I, for some reason I didn't think so.
Well, I think that was the difference between going with the inch and a half versus the inch and a quarter.
Maybe.
I think that's how this one got reduced down to be closer to the two eighty-five. So the original quote that was given was at an inch and a half on the overlay. Where we could reduce it down an inch and a quarter for the cost savings.
Is that gonna be good enough, or?
Yeah, I mean, well, we are tacking it, so that, that's the big savings right there is tacking, so.
So we don't do Smoke, we cut out Francesca, and we come in at just under two hundred eighty-five.
Could do Smoke. We still could do Smoke, it's just.
Am I missing, I'm not seeing.
Are you looking at the two ninety-one?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the cost for Smoke.
Uh, it is.
Right in front of me and I just don't see?
To the bottom.
So in the middle where it says pave, it's like the third line, it says Smoke Street approximately.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, right above that is the, the cost of Francesca.
Just going over all the bids.
Yeah, so after, after the pave subtitle, that next line shows the estimated total cost for each of the roads.
I was looking up above that, the other pave, under total estimated cost of Francesca and Smoke Street, there's no price, so, sorry, I missed it.
So if we take out Francesca, this sixty-nine ten.
Just two eighty-four, six fifteen.
Yeah.
For some reason I thought we had to take them both out.
No, just the Francesca.
Maybe if we took the inch and a half.
I don't know, there's so many different ways.
Yeah, in the original bid, we would have had to cut the both out, and then this still would have been over.
Oh, because we did, yeah, because we got rid of more milling too, yes.
I mean, I just want to make sure that if we go down to a one, an inch and a quarter versus inch and a half, we're not gonna cut ourselves short in ten years.
Right, or.
Well, we're doing less milling, so the old asphalt's still there.
Okay.
So, so then we get away with a little.
I get it.
Right, you're lea, you're leaving more of the old stuff than.
Because it's stuck, it, it, it did hold up better than I expected it to over last winter.
Yeah.
So, and we are still going it down, so.
Welcome, Mr. Sherland, do you have any questions on the paving bids?
Just listening quickly, so, I don't want to have to repeat every point, for like Deerfield, we wouldn't mill the full top layer down, except for in areas where it delaminated, the other areas it would be.
No, we're just gonna pat, we're gonna basically just glue it all down, not gonna mill anything on Deerfield Road. Where we were gonna, we were gonna mill everything on Deerfield Road.
Okay.
But it, it didn't, it didn't come up much worse than it was over last winter, which is a great sign. And then, uh.
Smoke Street, I know that we're trying to patch a bunch of things on that.
Yeah, Smoke Street, I'm not sure, you know, but the other big mill was Lucas Pond Road, and we are still gonna, that first half of Lucas Pond Road coming in from Northwood definitely has to be milled, there's just, there's no way around it.
It has.
Yeah, so they're still gonna mill that and then just top the rest.
And so, because for the, the two eighty-five number, as opposed to the two, we don't feel that we have anything anywhere to. Francesca's sixty-nine hundred dollars, we don't have anything in any part of any budget anywhere for sixty-nine hundred.
We, right, we would have to pull it at someplace, but nobody came with a plan, so, we're pulling it somewhere.
Right, but there is a warrant article to do the road reconstruction, but any road maintenance generally comes out of his budget, so if his budget somewhere has sixty-nine hundred dollars, we can make shims.
Right, I think it picked pretty clean last year.
So I'm just saying, but to.
Right, if there's something.
To try to limit the Francesca becoming significantly worse, because once the pot will start.
Yeah.
It, it just degrades further, but I don't have the budget.
It's a small section on Francesca.
Right, I don't know what's in shims and silco.
Yeah, it's.
It's in a low spot and it's always shaded by the trees, so it never really dries out, and everybody drives through there and it just, it's, it just keeps getting worse. Ellen, sorry, you were. If he, if he has sixty-nine hundred dollars, generally speaking, in his.
Operating budget.
We could just do all of the jobs as-is.
Correct, you just can't overspend the warrant article.
Right, so, right, the question I guess is, do we have the sixty-nine hundred dollars someplace?
As of right now, I would say absolutely, but we don't know what the winter is going to bring, so. Unless there's a better solution for subcontracted winter snow plowing.
Pretty scary.
I, I mean, the salt has been replenished and the salt shed, most part. You had a very large order on that, we ordered magnesium chloride.
Yeah, that's, that's out for winter, that's for the dark roads.
We, we did have some maintenance issues with the six-wheeler.
Yeah.
So, obviously that is coming out of the budget, I'm just, so, I, I mean, I. It's something that we can discuss further, but I think it's not a conversation that I'm prepared to say, yes, we can definitely find that in the highway department's operating budget this evening.
When would that potential portion, it's a very small job, it could be done later in the year. Like, is there a date that we say, alright, we'll take it out of this, we'll do our road maintenance, and then let's say in.
They do it all at the same time when they came. That's the only, that's the only, that's the only way they'd be able to do it for the bid.
Keeps the price cheaper because they're trucking everything in.
Moving in and moving out and whatnot, so it would have to be by the, by then.
I think we can have the conversation for your next meeting for sure, on August.
Fourth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But it won't be paid for by file.
I would definitely like to keep it on the table and see if we can. I think we're just saving, saving wear and tear on trucks, we're saving on a bunch of stuff if we can do it. I think they, they came down quite a bit on this job that. I think the sixty-nine hundred is even, I don't say it's a gift, but I'm saying it's gonna cost significantly more later.
Yeah, we have a seven o'clock hearing.
Do we have to make sure they approve this right now?
Well, I think we can further discuss after the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Thanks. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you. So do I need the announcement or just the chair?
It's Conservation's public hearing, so we can let them, I would just recommend maybe a recess for their public hearing and then we can, we can be.
Yeah, we're gonna recess our meeting for the public hearing for the Conservation Commission, and then we will resume the Board of Selectment meeting when they are done. Do we have enough seats for all of them? I don't mind if we.
How many members do you have? But Lori's gotta hook up for the presentation. So the HDMI is right here.
There is, okay.
And it's already on despite.
Which screen is it, this one that's gonna come up?
This one, the big one, I want, thank you.
Different, buried and bouncy.
Do you need a copy of this to the public hearing?
Lori, I want to get up, up to speed over there. Yeah, thank you, I don't have these memos. Uh, I think the, the foil has the memos that were sent out, everything. Yeah, they've, everybody's got them up there, so. You've got this page too, right? So I didn't know if anybody out in the audience might want back.
It's fine. Are you, are you set, Lori?
It's coming up.
You show it to RSA thirty-six dash A colon five Romano two. Open the public hearing pursuant to RSA six seventy-five colon seven. This hearing is being held in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen. Monday, July twenty-first, here at seven o'clock. The public hearing is to consider expenditures of up to thirty, three, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund for a conservation easement on two hundred and four acres located at one fifty-one Round Pond Road, tax map sixty-one lot two and sixty-one lot five. The property consists of an eighteen aisle, eighteen acre parcel on the west side, and approximately one hundred and ninety-eight acres on the east side of Round Pond Road. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to my vice chair, Cheryl, Dr. Cheryl Smith.
Cheryl Smith, Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and, um, Cam Demerit, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and I'll have the rest of the commission go around and introduce themselves, please.
Drew Stevens.
Susan Murney.
Mary Colhard.
And our guest tonight is Lori Summer from Southeast Land Trust, CELT. Um, she's gonna do a presentation for us tonight on this property and this project, um, which we've been very fortunate to have CELT take the lead with this landowner. Um, and you'll see from the presentation, as well as the information that we have, it's a, it's just a, a prime piece of, of property, um, ideal for, for conservation, um, so Lori, if you can.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great, and I apologize if I backed you, um, I don't know if I should.
Do you wanna sit here?
Nope, my, I just feel like a.
Then you can rotate.
Right, I know, thank you, everybody, I'm Lori Summer, I'm with the Southeast Land Trust, and I'm the Coastal Watershed Land Conservation Manager, and I'm here tonight to talk about this lovely property that Cheryl introduced. Um, this is the Lyden Huntington property, um, and you might recognize this view, here's the mountains of Pataqueway, um, with the park, the state park in this area, this is Round Pond Brook, and the Lyden property, I like this view, because it just gives you the landscape, the Lyden property is on this, um, part, on this side of the brook. Um, it's a two hundred, it's about a two hundred and fifteen acre parcel, and it abuts the five thousand four hundred thirty-five acre state park that is owned by the Department of, um, Na- of Natural and Cultural Resources. Um, and it's, um, located, the property is located off of Deerfield Road. It's, um, this property was purchased in the nineteen fifties by Harry R. Kellyon. Um, he had all intentions of moving his family to Nottingham, um, but things didn't, that did not happen for him. Um, he passed and left the property to his, um, son-in-law and his daughter Nancy Huntington. They both own fifty percent of share in the property. They, um, have been interested in conservation, um, CELT has been working on this project since twenty sixteen. Um, you know, they've, they've been trying to figure out, you know, whether it would be a fee act, interest, a fee acquisition or a conservation easement, trying to consider what their children's interests would be, and, um, in August of twenty twenty-four, we worked with them to get an appraisal done of the property, and the appraisal was done by Stark and Webster, and they noted that the property, um, is worth one million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars because of the development potential, and I'll get into that with a little bit of more, um, maps. Um, so we sat down and discussed, you know, how we would get to that price, and the landowner agreed to a bargain sale of, um, providing a charitable contribution of five hundred and eighty thousand. So a very generous donation, um, so with that, we're, you know, purchasing the property, CELT will be owning it, um, and the purchase price is nine hundred thousand dollars. As I said, the property is located on Deerfield Road, let's see, there, you got, yeah, Deerfield Road, um, hmm, let's go back, sorry. This is, um, Deerfield Road right here, uh, it courses through and Round Pond Road, you can see, get a glimpse of it right there. Round Pond Road goes down to a parking lot for the park, where a lot of, um, outdoor enthusiasts hike, as well as boulder, climb the boulder fields out there, it's very, very popular. Um, this is the part of the property frontage here, um, there is a small house on the property, which will be excluded. There's gonna be a fifteen, like, I think it's more like twelve acre exclusion, so they will retain that area under their, you know, private ownership. And then this is the property that then goes down to Round Pond Brook, which is like down in here, um, beautiful property. Uh, and I, I don't know if I mentioned, but it's eleven hundred feet along Round Pond Brook. The eighteen acre parcel that Cheryl mentioned is on this side of Round Pond Brook as, as well. The property, this is the area that's gonna be retained, um, there is a, it's a mainly forested property, a lot of good forest, um, and Tavern Hill, a known peak in town, um, is in this area. It's, all this property, um, comes up with a rise in this location with part of the property draining down to Back Creek, which then flows on to, um, Pataqueway, and like where the fundy, fundy boat launches, it courses down there. And the remaining property has wetland drainages, there's like a wetland seep through here. I found probably five vernal pools, confirmed vernal pools, that are good for salamanders and turtles and frogs. So estimate probably five acres of wetland, so it's very, you know, dry, developable, and then this remaining part of the property drains down to back, to Round Pond Brook, which then flows into Pataqueway Lake as well, so really important to, um, you know, the, the water quality protection to these channels that both enter the, the lake. Um, it was cut maybe fifteen years ago, mostly to improve the forest stand. Um, a forester, Charlie Marino, um, uh, was the forester out here, and CELT would retain Charlie, because he has done really good quality ma- management out here. Our organization uses a lot of the data that's available, that the state generates, as well as other partners. Um, this is a bright pink map, if you're familiar with the Watts, New Hampshire Fishing Game Wildlife Action Plan. They evaluate properties based on, you know, habitat, connections to lands, um, to areas that are of high value for wildlife with wetlands and, um, different forest biodiversity. This comes up as the highest value habitat in the state, that's what the pink is, so this property is really important for wildlife, for connectivity. Um, it's in a tier one, the whole property is in tier one of a conservation plan for the endangered landing turtle. So there's known, um, re- you know, turtles in this area, there may be other, like, spotted turtles as well. We had a botanist on the property to look at any, um, locations of rare plants or natural communities, because we're applying for grants, and a lot of times that kind of information, just like this wildlife habitat information, is really helpful to, um, funders. And they basically found, um, this is Tavern Hill, um, it's, and they found several communities. There's a dry Appalachian oak forest at the summit of this Tavern Hill, and when you walk out there, you will, you know, I walked out there, and it just struck me how different, it's this very, you know, full forest, and you're in this, like, nice pleasant park setting, and it's because of this rare community type. It's like a sedge, Pennsylvania sedge, um, and there's stones there that were left, I think, you know, from, you know, many years ago, for people to rest and, um, take in the beauty. Um, there's a couple other community types in this area, as well as a rare plant, so those are, um, key, um, benefits for conserving this property. So, when we, when we approach a project, we think about how we're going to, um, purchase it or purchase a conservation easement, and in this case, we were going to purchase it to own it, so CELT will own and manage this long term. And we need to look for funding programs, and I went and applied in, like, the winter of twenty twenty-three and applied, it was a submitter in twenty twenty-four to the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. They had this national competition, you know, uh, uh, for funding through a regional conservation partnership program. And unfortunately, we did not get selected for that project, um, so in the meantime, I was also looking for other funding sources. We went to the Forest Service, they have, um, strategic small tract additions to properties like this that are surrounded by a state park, so figuring that would be a key source of funding. And after working through with many staffing, you know, getting them on the property, they felt that with the budget concerns in the new year, um, that they're having to fund maintenance of properties, they really weren't in the, um, realm of purchasing properties with the funds they had, so that was a dead end. Also went to the Department of Interior, they have a land and water conservation fund, which, um, it's a challenging program, and after talking to multiple people who had that program up as well, um, they did not feel this would have, um, added benefit for recreation, so they just did not consider it a reasonable project. So, backing up and sitting down, we decided that the best thing we're gonna do is look for local sources, all the state and sources that we can. So we've applied to the Land and Cultural Heritage Investment Program, it's actually a Land and Community Heritage Investment Program, LCHIP. Um, we've submitted that application, we have a site visit on Sep- August, August twenty-eighth with that review panel. Um, that program is, is competitive, um, but we feel like we've really put in a strong application. With that program, we would have some, um, obligations to keep the property open for public access, for hunting, for fishing, for hiking. Um, so that would be in the terms of the, of the grant agreement. Um, we're see, we sought funds with the, from the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, and they've provided funds, um, to the project, and I'll show you, I'll display the budget in a, in the next slide. We will be applying, we have a, we will be applying to the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership, um, in the early spring. The Moose Plate App, Grant Program is this fall, so we would be putting an application, that's deadline is September twelfth. We're here in front of the town, um, requesting funding for, from the Conservation Funds, um, which we understand would require holding an interest, the town would hold an interest in the property, which we're, um, find, you know, we're comfortable with putting that in the fee deed. Um, and that, um, interest basically is if CELT dissolved or disappeared, then the town would own the property. Uh, we're also looking at funds from the Charitable Foundation and private fundraising. Um, so here's the budget broken down with some of the costs that are associated with every, you know, with the project, which they add up. So we should, we're showing the bargain sale that the owner is providing. We always do a environmental assessment of the property to see if there's any, uh, environmental or hazardous waste, um, present on the property. It's a visual inspection of the property, just to cover any risks, we're going to be commissioning a survey. We will need to do a second appraisal, just for all the, to update the appraisal for the funding sources. Um, our legal costs are, include title research, title insurance, legal costs for handling the closing. We, we, like I mentioned, we hired a botanist to help with the grant applications, we include staff time in the budget, and we have a contingency, which, you know, would disappear if we don't need it, but it's always, um, there's always some, you know, there's sometimes reasons you need some backup funds, um, if some, if the survey costs were to come in higher or, um, any of the closing costs go up. Um, the stewardship costs, it's where we'll be owning this and managing it for the long term. We will be developing, um, a formal, a, a formalized parking area. Um, I can show you, it was, so when you saw the fields, it's right off of Round Pond, there's gonna be an area there that can, um, hold up to, you know, high for six cars. Um, we'll have a sign up, and then our stewardship management fund, um, is for the fee ownership, so we can continue to do the management and steward the property, and then legal defense fund as well is included in case, um, there's any reason we would need to defend the, the, the purchase. The, the revenue side, um, tonight, we're requesting a, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from the Conservation Fund. Um, we're, we've submitted the LCHIP application, which is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, which would cover purchase price and some of that, all the other transaction costs. The Lamprey River Advisory Committee has provided a hundred thousand toward the project, which was, uh, really, um, spectacular, because this is fairly hu- in the headwaters of the Lamprey, um, so they see the importance of this, um, uh, project in the realm of the Pataqueway and Pataqueway State Park and Pataqueway Lake. Um, we're gonna be applying to the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership, as well as the, um, New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, and then we still have some funds pending to be raised for the total project, to cover the total project costs of over one point six million dollars. So, just of, you know, and this is the view of the property on the right-hand side. This is the Lyden property that courses down to Round Pond Brook, which you can see finally outlets to the lake. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Lori, does the, does the board have questions for Lori?
My first question would be, how confident are you about the other grants? Because that's a lot of money, I mean, that's over half of the revenue is just from grants and private, private gifts.
Right, right, um, it's, it's, there's, the grants are competitive. Um, I think the one that's mostly competitive is the LCHIP, and, and we applied, you know, we could have requested more, but they have a algorithm of how much you can, you know, submit for a request, so we didn't go the full amount. Um, I feel like that one's gonna be competitive because of the connections to the park. It's, it's a missing puzzle piece to the park, and, um, they like to see that, they like to see that it has public access. Um, and we really made it shine with the plant information to show that these natural communities that are state threatened, you know, globally, and one globally threatened, um, would be protected in the long term, and we would manage to protect those as well, so, um, the landowner was also concerned with the, um, we had that conversation with the landowner, and they're keeping us on our toes. I'm going to be reporting, um, in December, once we hear from LCHIP, how we are doing with funding. You know, they are concerned, they're, this is being tied up until, we're, we're planning to close no later than December twenty twenty-six, and so they were concerned, they're ti- you know, we're tying that property up for a couple years, so, um. So um, I, I feel confident that we will get what, what we've are requesting. And especially with the Great Bay Partnership and the Charitable Fund, the Foundation, those are pretty sure bets as well.
And Lori, just a twelve twenty-six twenty-six, so it's not.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah, sorry.
That would be a really quick turnaround.
Yeah, you haven't even applied for two, I mean, looking at, I'm agreeing with Tim here. You have a hundred thousand dollars, like you have a lot of pending. And the landowner is cutting a half a million dollars off this, but you only have a hundred thousand dollars of one point seven million.
And that's, that's pretty typical for projects. They'll, they'll come in, they look, they look for conservation fund support, because that conservation fund support also provides um an extra show or extra show of incentive to those funding agencies that there is definitely interest in this project and support for the project. And so that's why Lamprey, you know, jumped on pretty quick, um, was supporting that. And to the best of my knowledge, in, in all the years that I've been on the Conservation Commission, working with conservation, the Selt has a very good history of obtaining um LCHIP grants to support their, their projects. And this one's got a lot of bells and whistles that they look for for those projects.
Yeah, the size, the location, the resiliency, there's other maps, like I think with the project memo, the evaluation kind of gets into all the other plans and benefits that the property provides. It's a shining star, I would feel. Land and Community Heritage Investment Program, yeah.
I mean, the only risk to the, there's really no risk to the town, because if we agree to grant the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but all, none of this goes through.
Right, exactly.
The money remains in the conservation fund, so.
Yeah, but this is, um, this is probably one of the, well, it is one of the projects, there's other projects, but we're also going to be actively fundraising, so that hundred and seventy-eight, you know, I think you would count towards already securing. I mean, funds that, you know, we, we can tap into and, um, and then going out for other fundraising.
Would there be, what would the conservation restrictions be on the property?
The only, so we're, we don't really have, so it's, it would be under our ownership and management. So um, it would, there's not really any restrictions. There's, um, you know, there's gonna be a parking area, there's, we're not gonna be setting up trails just because.
That was one of my questions I wanted to ask about, because there is previously existing snowmobile trails that basically, um, there's that, like you said, it's a missing puzzle piece. Uh, I can, this, I can pass this around if you want. It would be very beneficial to have at least a connecting trail across the bottom of that part there, um, to connect that snowmobile trail for biking and snowmobiling or whatever.
So were you thinking down here?
Go to the other map.
Oh, sure.
So there's a trail there, I can, I'll point it out.
I've never, um, I don't know of any snowmobile trail, I haven't seen it out there.
Well, I can, I can show, share.
Okay, great, thank you, sure.
Basically, there was an old snowmobile trail that basically went to here and on the other side went to here. So they just, they're missing that missing puzzle piece to get across. And I could work with the snowmobile club to build that trail out.
Chip, do you know if that trail, are, are there water crossings there?
Um, there, across that, it's not, it does not go across Round Pond.
I mean, does it go across the brook or anything like that?
In, in the park, it goes across the brook.
In the park?
In the park itself, in that property itself, I don't think there's, there's water there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said that part was dry, right?
It's right up here.
It's a, it's, would be north of the brook.
Okay, so there was never a trail though, here?
Right, right, that part of the trail is missing. So there's like, it's two dead end pieces that would be nice to be able to loop that through.
I would wanna, it would need to be considered strongly. I think there's concern, I would have concerns that it would be very close to Round Pond Brook. And there's some scrub shrub wetlands in that vicinity.
I mean, it could be, if it's granted to go across, it would be where you would say would be, makes sense. And that's really what I'm asking is to provide a multi-use trail across it someplace, just to connect those dots.
Great, um, I'll run the, by the steward, by stewardship committee, and we can take a look at it and get back to you on that, sure.
Because it would be, you know, like you said, it's a missing puzzle piece.
Right. Yeah, is the snowmobile, is it active?
It has not been active because it's just dead-ended, so it just got turned. Nobody, right, but.
You want people to get on support for conservation, that's supposed to be multi-use.
Right, 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 it's supposed to be multi-use, you know, this is, that's what conservation's about.
Right, no, thank you, John. I did not, I was not aware of the tra, of the trail. And, you know, snowmobiling in my mind hasn't been really an active, you know.
But I do know that Selt does have snowmobile access on some of their properties.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make sure that this is definitely a big part of this.
Sure, and we would look into whether it's allowable use for the other grant funding as well, great. Maybe I can get a copy of this, or I can email you.
Actually, just, I, well, I wish, I don't know if I have another one.
I'll give you my card and we can send, like, send me a copy or something, that's great, sure.
I was like, I found this one, I was like, I'm not sure I have it.
If a teenager, you would take a picture of it.
Right, right, take a, you know, I take a.
Take a picture on my phone, he's gonna say you can take a picture on your phone.
It's gonna, I have a R.
Perfect, I know, yeah, no, that's fine, let's take a picture. I know, I'm not a, I'm not a kid, and that's why I didn't think of it. No, that's great, I appreciate that, that's great.
It's an older map, it's been, you know.
I.
Just shows that previous existence.
Yeah, I, um, sure, I, I think the other, the other concern is, is, and it's, it's pretty rare, but um, I, I know that my family snowmobiled pretty extensively in Vermont, and there have been numerous trails crossing private property that have been closed because of the disrespect um from some of the snowmobilers.
Right.
Um, and I would think that this is not one of the wide-open trails where they're going sixty miles an hour like they do on, on some of the old fire roads and things like that. So I would hope that the snowmobile club would, you know, if this does come through, would very much respect that, that property.
Yeah, I mean, it's, basically, it's in the park, the New Hampshire speed limit is forty-five. You're, you're surrounding, the rest of that trail system there is in the park itself.
Right.
So it's just adding that connection across that one piece of property to add an extra loop for, you know.
Right.
It adds a, a nice scenic loop through there. So, and then the trails on the park are not speedy, that's for sure.
No, no, they're, they're more the kind of trails that I would like to snowmobile on, not the ones, let's see if we can put a hundred miles on.
Perfect, I'd take you, yeah, I'll definitely look into that.
Yeah, there was, I mentioned that, like, they wanted to try to possibly prevent, you know, it had value based on its um potential development. But then I look at this map and the small topography that I have shows us to be quite steep on most of it. Or, because we've now have the new slope ordinance in town, so I would wonder if this is as developable that it was thought to have been two years ago, where now we've blocked out land like this to be developed. So it, it might not be developable anymore, it might not even have the value you think it does, because it, instead of being able to put a hundred houses, you might only be able to put twenty based on the new regulations, which would cut the cost now significantly. I don't know that, I'm looking at a very small topo, topographical map, so. It just seems about as steep as the other maps and the, the other peaks in the park. And, but this is in the boulder area, I'm not familiar with this half of the park.
And it's, it's beyond, yeah, it's beyond the, the, the cau- cauldron, the volcanic geological um ring.
And so, yeah, you do have some, some topography. It, it's, you know, kind of rises here and goes down that way.
I mean, it just looks like there's a lot right in here, and then a lot right here, building up to the Tavern Hill, I believe, is what this is showing on this map.
It's about Tavern Hill, um, but this area, I think you can get some interesting topography down in here.
There's some gentle sloping, yeah, it's quite a bit before it gets higher.
Especially a long Round Pond Road and Deerfield Road.
Exactly.
I think you could definitely develop lots in there.
This can develop all around.
Okay.
That's a pretty far problem.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's a good point.
I drove through.
It's hard, okay, yours is a little bit better. And not only, okay, is that six hundred? That's six hundred.
Six hundred or five hundred?
Six hundred.
That's six hundred, and that's four fifty.
Four fifty, that's five, five fifty, six.
Yeah, that's, and that's far.
Yeah.
I'm asking a question. Because if you're gonna go and get this rechecked, and then they're like, oh, I mean, land is very valuable. This is not a bad price, three fifty, if the town looks at it, two hundred acres or whatever, like, it's, um, it's all, I'm just always been known to ask sometimes maybe tough questions, you know, I mean, like I said, you have what shows to be, you physically have a hundred thousand dollars, but you're trying to make one point seven, and the landowner's getting nervous with their gift, if you will, of the five eighty, right? And they're, they're sitting there and they're seeing everything, buying and running. So the five eighty, I mean, is kind of a guarantee, but that's not really what you're trying to do, so I'm just.
So the appraisal was done, um, I think it was August of twenty twenty-four, so late August twenty twenty-four. Um, soon it's, you know.
But I don't know if our slope ordinance changes that at all, but I don't know the wording specifically.
Very desirable and.
I think the amount of money to be raised is daunting, but I think it's fantastic.
Right.
Just as one individual, I think it's amazing, I mean, it's watershed area. I live near there, there's connectivity for wildlife, um, it's very diverse. And it's water, water, water protection.
Yeah.
Which I think is, you know, without water and protection.
Right.
I, I think it's a fantastic project.
To get to the point about the appraisal, um, it was based on comparable sales in the area. Yeah, so it's a real, yeah.
And then, I guess, my, you said you're, do not plan on opening or really developing any trails. Are there any trails from the state that are like on each side, kind of similar to John's hopeful snowmobile trail? But is there anything that's like been dead-ended for a while that would?
That, just that, probably that snowmobile trail is the only one that.
Just thinking of like, how are we opening it up for other people to enjoy?
Have a parking lot.
That they're increasing the number of parking, because parking has been an issue going into the boulder area, with people parking out on the road and parking out on Deerfield Road and walking in and.
There's no parking signs all over there.
Right, the boulder area is in the park itself.
Correct.
So, and there is a, the state does have a parking lot.
They do, but often, full and with people parking around.
So they park down there and they park along the road. So we'll relieve some of the parking with, you know, our new parking lot, and it's.
Well, you're not gonna.
It's kind of in this area.
Five or six cars.
Right, five or six cars is five or six cars, better than nothing.
Right, that's not gonna eliminate the problem.
No.
But it might be nice to have some trails that go out to like, that, those stones that you showed.
Yeah, no, people, it would be totally open for public access. We just don't, you know, we recognize there's thirty-two miles of trails in the park. So didn't feel that this would be needed to add trails to a really sensitive, you know, habitat.
Just one, I'm just asking for one trail.
It'll be a Christmas present.
Right, it's, I just like, is there, have there been snowmobiling? And all the last, that's what I would wonder.
Well, he, he's saying no because it doesn't connect, so it's like you drive down a dead-end trail.
Thinking, is there a snowmobile club that's been snowmobiling lately?
Well, there's a club that maintains those, the trails in the park.
Yeah.
When do we have snow?
Well, yeah, of course, when we have snow, but they, I mean, they maintain the trails even without snow, because then they will groom them.
It would make that a very nice loop, regardless if it's snowmobiles or not, like for biking or whatever.
Right, for bikes or.
Open up a loop.
Yeah, I've never seen that, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's definitely worth looking into. The other thing with, with hiking trails is, and with any of the trails, so if, if some agreement can come to and, uh, in terms of the snowmobile club, and the snowmobile club maintains that trail, and it's not Selt that has to maintain them, but as soon as you put in any other kind of trails, somebody's gotta maintain those trails.
Right, right.
So hiking trails, et cetera, so unless you have a lot of volunteers to be able to do that, if you put more extensive walking trails through this kind of property, somebody's gotta maintain the trails.
Right, and, and obviously, the snowmobile club would maintain it. Um, and people could walk across that trail anyway or whatever, it would just be open for whatever use, but allowing.
It'd be less snowy, because it'd be summertime.
Right, yeah, yeah, I knew.
Yeah, I did not, um, I haven't noticed the trail on either side, I'd be interested to see those.
Yeah, it's, it's probably not very obvious right now.
But it's even in existence.
Yeah, I mean, there was, at least at one point, there was a marker out there that said number nine.
How long ago was that?
I don't know, at one point.
Thirty years ago, probably.
Other, other questions?
Maybe longer, probably.
So we can just keep this moving, so.
Yeah. That's up to them.
I have one more public question. I, I get, I'm not looking at it so much as, I mean, it's wonderful to have it open and have it accessible, I think that's important, but I'm looking at more as protection for our town, for our water, for wildlife. That's how I'm viewing, I hope John gets his wish, that sounds like a nice way to get out there, I'm not a snowmobiler, but you can take me out, John. But I'm looking at more as a, a great opportunity for protection and preservation. If the board doesn't have, did you have another question? Okay, so I think at this time, if there's public comment from the audience or questions from the audience regarding this project. Therese?
Hi, my name is Therese Thompson, I've lived in Nottingham for almost twenty years. Three different locations on the lake, and I live in Raymond. I served on the Lamprey River Advisory Committee for the town of Nottingham, and now I serve for Raymond. And I want you guys to vote yes. The health, the health of the lake is key to the health of the Lamprey River. This is just absolutely gorgeous, I thank you very much.
Other comment or questions?
Gary Anderson, fifty thousand. Yeah, just a question regarding the finance. I have to read my whole book, I guess. What is available currently in the conservation fund?
Current, current balance in the conservation fund is six hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and five cents. So with this project, it would leave um three hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in the conservation fund to allow us to work with other projects. And five cents, she said.
I'm Gary Davis, and I'm also, I'm the one that, I'm Teresa, and I also watch it. But I have another moment as well, I live across the street. And I lived across the street from the property for twenty-five years. And I could probably hike it with my eyes closed. There's the snowmobile trail, you'd be bushwhacking. But from a recreational perspective, I think if they can give you a larger parking area, where you can park a truck and a trailer, and take some relief off that parking lot, and get the people off the road where the no parking signs are, I think that would be really nice. During COVID, they had a big digital sign that sat in front of that entryway of, you know, Mount Round Pond Road. It said, you know, caution, no parking, restricted parking, and they parked a cruiser there, that's how many people that were up. I mean, that was crazy times, and it's not like that anymore, but you get a nice ball of weekend, and that parking lot is stressed. So from a recreational perspective, having a parking lot offload, I think satisfies a pretty good recreational need. And from a development perspective, if you head up that road and take a left into these areas, I could see a really nice subdivision. Now, if you want to enter that subdivision from Deerfield Road down here, that's gonna be one hell of a challenge. Topography is straight up, there's a lot of wetlands and there's a lot of rocks. The other thing is, you mentioned it hasn't been logged in fifteen years. Topography is straight up. There's a lot of wetlands and there's a lot of rocks. The other thing is, you mentioned it hasn't been logged in fifteen years. I think there's trees out there that are hundred years old. If you walk the six thousand acres of Tuckaway Park, you're gonna find some trees on that land that are bigger than anything in the surrounding area.
Yeah.
So I would talk to your forester and make sure he keeps some of that old growth.
Oh, yeah. Now, that's why we'll retain him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any comments or questions?
Do you have any uh do you have any input about whether any of Americans with you at all? It's always a major issue historically in all of these things.
Right. I have not done any of that research. Um I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. I I mean, so.
I'm Tom Duffy, twenty, Tuckaway Shores Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire. Also currently the president of the the Tuckaway improvement association. We also had a presentation. Uh and we uh definitely endorsed the project from the standpoint of protection of Round Pond Creek and other uh feed into that area, David mentioned, but also feeds back creek as well. Uh we're very concerned particularly about those tributaries entering the north end of the lake, which test uh higher than other area, other runoff areas for phosphorus. So anything that will stabilize the banks and the waters and the land uh will be beneficial to them.
The the two biggest tributaries in but into Tuckaway are fed from that land area.
There's Bat Creek.
This is Bat Creek right here. So half this runs down to Bat Creek and the other half is gonna run down to this round pond. But these both enter into Tuckaway Lake into the north side of the lake where the phosphorus levels are really high and they're the two biggest tributaries.
Question.
I uh not a question. Pam Kelly, thirty five Sacks Road. Uh I'm the communications director for the Tuckaway Lake Improvement Association, which means I send out communications to our constituents. I also post on uh two Facebook groups that uh residents and constituents of our uh lake association often look at and uh I got nothing, but then I posted about this and I I suggested that anybody who's interested should come down tonight to speak or ask questions or uh you know, raise objections if they had any. Um and I heard nothing but positive things uh from people both um on the, you know, the communication I sent out and also on the Facebook um post that I made. So I'm pretty sure that we're, you know, as an association, not only the leadership, but our, you know, our members are also uh on board with this and very pleased. And there's one phrase that Lori used in her presentation, pollutant attenuation properties. And and as, you know, I had to write it down, I'm gonna forget that. But as Tom mentioned and Dan also said, that's the that's the biggest concern that those of us who are uh interested in in, you know, making sure that the lake is, you know, stays as as clean as possible is the pollution um that comes from, you know, runoff. Uh and having as much protection as possible is always beneficial to the lake. So I hope you vote yes.
And if lake quality goes down, property values can go down and tax revenue can also go down. So there's it's kind of a vicious cycle. Seen that happen at other lakes, particularly some up in Maine. Other questions from the public? Yep.
Um Chris Doyle, one eighty two Stevens Hill Road. Um just to echo what Charlotte and Lori and other people said, that I think conservation is so much more about protecting the fragile ecosystem, the wildlife, the trees, the water, et cetera, et cetera, than it is the recreation. So if you talk about that at some point, that it really you know, on the side of the main purpose, right?
But we want people to have access to these properties because that's how they really get to to know what's important to keep us open so that they can have access to nature.
It's definitely balanced because sometimes too, you know, to get funding from certain groups, they require that you put a little bit larger parking lot at least, right? If you really want to drive it home and get that extra funding, maybe you need a partial trail, right? It's it's a balance. Some people want to save the turtles, some people want to rent snowmobiles.
Luckily, the turtles usually aren't running around when the snowmobiles are, so. Shouldn't be. Snow turtles. If there's nothing further from the public, then I'll close that. And if there's any more from the board? Nope, so.
So close the public area as far as the conservation commission is concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Laura.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Anything I can provide, you know? Sure.
If you need to reconvene, um conference room two is open. Thank you.
So before we get back to our paving bids, do we want to have any discussion about the approval?
I think a a as you mentioned too, you know, even approving, if the rest of the finances for some reason didn't transpire, then there's really no harm in.
Nothing to lose.
And just to remind folks, as the funds that are in the conservation fund are not, it's not taxpayer money. It's mostly from land use changed tax uh and then private donations, correct?
Right.
So I think that's important to understand that we're not spending taxpayer money on this.
If you need some coffee, who else?
Uh one final question for somebody in the country. Do you have any other conservation projects going on right now roughly that you?
We we had another project um with Selt, but uh the landowners have withdrawn that at this time. Uh so that's that's way, way back on a back burner and we do have um two other uh landowners that have approached us, but they're in very, very early stages right now.
Okay, just with the potential remaining balance, but yeah.
Yep. Yeah, as as a matter of fact, the the Selt project.
I'm tired.
And within that that balance and still left money in in the conservation fund, but um that one's fallen by the wayside.
So if there's not any further discussion, does anybody want to make a motion?
So sure, I will do it. I will throw out my motion. I'll make a motion to approve the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars um from conservation fund for towards the purchase of uh Lyden Huntington.
There's a cheat sheet for you right there on the bottom. They wrote it out for you.
You're good, you're good. I'd known that, I would have made the motion.
Request of forceful support of expending the monies from the conservation fund for the proposed acquisition of the property currently owned by Chris Lyden, trustee of the one fifty one Round Pond Road nominee trust and Nancy Huntington with the property title to be held by Selt and the town hold an executory interest with the caveat that at least one trail, one multi-use trail is allowed across the property to connect the pieces of the state park.
So let me let me just ask then, are you saying that the way that 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 right now is is proposed, what you've given as a motion, is that if there is no trail, then there will be no funding for this project?
That's the way I propose my thing, which puts the homework on Lori to make sure that.
And if other funding agencies will not allow that, then you jeopardize an entire property for one.
I do, right, I do. That is my proposal. That's my motion. Because that the recreational aspect of spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of town money to me is very important to benefit.
It's not town money.
It it is, though.
It's it's not, it's not town money. It is to be used for conservation.
It's town assets. Okay, it's town assets. It it sure is. It is. It's it belongs.
Too good an opportunity to let it go where it is, the protection, the lack of.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I mean, that's important to me that.
How about the larger parking lot? Do you see value in that?
That's that's fine. I I that to me, I don't know. I mean, the is that.
Is that a larger parking lot for a sled trailer and not even get into Tuckaway?
Hold on, there's been a motion.
There's been a motion.
This shouldn't be back and forth.
Yeah.
Uh there's been a motion. Is there a second to the motion that Mr. Jack has had, Mr. Jack has made?
At least for discussion purposes, it should be a motion, a second, a discussion.
Right, I I just I get the motion and the second. I don't uh.
It was a second.
I'm not, but I'm saying I don't know if I could support shoe holding this whole thing down for a trail which hasn't, I agree is a discussion point and you can maybe go to a conservation committee, so that's my point of not.
Talent, although there should be a second in that discussion.
But nobody will second it and I'm saying I'm withholding second because instead of us sitting here quietly for twelve minutes.
So if there's no second.
Yeah.
The motion fails, so do we have any?
Give me the cheat sheet. Thanks.
Hey, I, yeah, it's fine.
Let's see where this is.
Just put on the.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion um that the board of selectmen vote in favor um in support of expending monies from the conservation fund for the proposed acquisition of the property currently owned by Chris Lyden, trustee of the one fifty one Round Pond Road nominee trust and Nancy Huntington with the property title to be held by Selt and the town hold an executory interest. That amount would be in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
See the second, any discussion?
I think it's important to have that access to, you know, across the property and Lori basically said she would have to do homework on that. And, you know, if other, somebody else comes in with less money, we're gonna be throwing, you know, we're putting in a huge piece of this from our town.
But if they don't get the rest of the money, then they don't spend that money.
Deal bowls out.
That right, that's okay. So either that or they find somebody else.
I like the idea of having a trail too, but I don't think it's a make or break deal. This is too good an opportunity in a delicate area.
I think that if they, I think if.
What good is having property that you can't use?
Because it will protect our watershed. It will help prevent pollution. It will help increase connectivity for wildlife. And it'll be an area that people can use for hunting and other, maybe not snowmobiling.
Protecting the watershed.
I hope so.
If it was not developed, I can see protecting, but it's not gonna reduce the watershed usage. The farms around it are your are your phosphorus loading, which we are exclusively shielding off the farm that has probably the highest phosphorus loading. It's staying in that little four eighteen acre, twelve acre L shape. So it's not gonna reduce it.
Well, but more development and septic systems certainly will as a high phosphorus level as it is. And if you put in forty homes there, that's a pretty darn desirable area.
I'm all for not building more houses. That's why I'm for, but I'm just saying, uh you know, sometimes there's the areas that have the high phosphorus loading is not what we're talking about. We're talking about potentially reducing the additionals. I get that, but.
But I believe we were just told that there's a lot of phosphorus.
Correct, the farm that we're isolating and the farm that's up the road are where your phosphorus are because they have pay fields.
But we don't have the opportunity to buy those and preserve those.
I agree.
But we do have the opportunity and there's a lot of building along that area. Now, every time I go down Deerfield, Nottingham Road, there's a new house. It's a very desirable area. They're historic scenic roads. People come from all over New England to ride their motorcycles and, you know, look around and and hike those areas. I, you know, I think without preserving, so it's raw, teaching about development if we don't protect, and I do think it would help our watershed tremendously. I really do. I think septic systems are rough and I think there'd be a lot of development there. Otherwise, we can get a lot of money for that land.
And if I think if they can close on the deal in December, I think I would encourage you and other folks that want recreation is to then go to Selt and, you know, advocate for that type of usage.
Well, yeah, I think that's important, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that I think.
I'd be willing to work on that too, but let's not put the cart before the horse or the snowmobile before the horse. Let's get the property first.
Right, exactly. Well, that's what I'm saying is like, let's make sure that we can do what we need to do, you know.
Or well, I guess, yeah.
I mean, I'm I'm trying to put the cart before the horse by saying this.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm putting the preservation of and protection ahead of.
So I think we've had some discussions. I don't think we're gonna change any minds uh on the board. There's been a motion and a second and some discussion. Like, take a vote.
Okay, take a vote.
Were you in a roll?
Yeah, we'll do a little call.
I, Steve Welch.
Uh, nay, John Decker.
I, Tim Daubrio.
I'm Asher.
I, Charlotte Fife.
The motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck. Give some work out of you.
Thank you.
Convince me to change my vote.
Convince me to.
The vote's already been said, John.
I know, but do do good work. Convince me that.
To his point is valid and it, you know, it is a weird thing that would hopefully fill in anyway.
Only in first is the.
All right, so on to the paving bids.
Probably still bothering you.
After some discussion about the paving bids, I know I just didn't want to rush into a decision.
Yeah, that's fine.
For some key of hearing.
Yeah. Above my.
We have very smart microphones, so if you can just allow that to clear out. The microphone picks up everything.
Okay, okay.
Can that clear it out through?
Thank you, everybody.
So as I, as I was saying, um we were having some discussion about the paving bids. I don't want to rush to decision on it, but um so we had the three paving bids, one from R and D paving, one from Pike Industries, uh and the last from content continental paving.
And then we had a re from R and D.
Yes.
So I would back to this, so I mean, uh the sixty nine hundred dollars, I feel like we should approve as is for the amount. I think that somewhere in the entire town budget, we can probably find sixty nine hundred dollars based on either staffing that we've made it through throughout the year to to just prevent a twenty thousand dollar repair later on when the road deteriorates further or we have to get another company in here, et cetera, et cetera.
Or push it off to the next year or whatever with.
Right, I mean, I think Steve's attack here, like before we were trying to, we, you know, to just completely strip and fix a road, strip and fix a road. Too many roads have degraded in that time, missing a year of not having, so Smoke Street is in vast disrepair and that's a major thoroughfare that needs to be done. Francesca, people do go through that route to make it over out towards Ledge, you know, Ledge Farm and stuff like that. Like it is, even though it's a development, it still gets some, I think, as and how much they've come down on this, I think that it's kind of an opportunity to take advantage of it fully.
So and just to be clear too, the the way the warrant article read was for the, you know, paving of those three roads, Deerfield Road, Stevens Hill Road and Lucas Pond. And for those three roads to warrant articles for two eighty or any other projects the town sees deems fit. Um but for to be clear, for those three was two hundred sixty eight thousand, four eighty is what the quote is for those three. We're basically using some more of that money for other projects in town and then going to take money from the budget so that we can do all.
And I believe Smoke Street fits into the criteria of that in terms of like as needed.
As far as priorities, yes.
Yeah, uh Smoke Street's degraded a lot. It's our major thoroughfare over to where we have two gassing stations for the police, for the fire, and then it is a sand pit. So like our trucks are using it.
There's a lot of new development in there as well.
Yeah, and we're not doing a full reconstruction. It is a patch on the heavily worn items. And then I think the final one.
My only concern with that is people already go forty five mile an hour down that road right now. If you make it, if you make it nicer.
Well.
Yeah, but you gotta.
Don't much about that.
You you gotta save the.
I agree.
The old Nottingham turf bike.
Right. Fix it in laminated spots.
Yeah.
At this point, we're just looking to approve the paving.
Right, exactly.
And not worry about total budget. We can decide that at a later day.
I mean, I think we approve it as is and then if it if it gets closer and they haven't started, we could probably cut it for some reason too. Like if we get to that point, we're like, oh.
One of the roads if we need to.
Yeah.
So is there um a motion to approve it?
I want to make a motion to approve the paving estimate from R and D paving for the total sum of two hundred ninety one thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars for paving on. for paving on Deerfield Road, Lucas Pond Road, Stevens Hill Road, uh, Francesca Way and Smoke Street.
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
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 Yes, like research and development, but it's not research and development. Are, I don't know. Ronald and David. I'm just making.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what stands for.
Ellen, on to your, uh, report.
Apologize, I don't have this in print form. I thought I printed, but I did not.
Okay, I'll just go look for it, so I will not look for it.
Okay, um, so as you'll see, you know, we, we have some upgrades in the space. We have our eighty-five inch display, which is going to take place of what was previously a projector and screen in our previous conference room. Uh, it's not a smart board, so it's not interactive to touch, but we can obviously hook into it by HDMI. Um, it has sound, so that will be a great addition for our presentations like tonight's. I think if the audience would like to opine whether or not the display was good, okay, eighty-five inches. Um, so that's one of the new improvements for this meeting space. The other one you'll see is our ceiling mounted microphone. There are hundreds of microphones up there, so it's, it actually works. It's a smart device that's controlled by an iPad that's sitting over there. Um, it will pick up all of the sound within this room, but right now it's priority focused on the board table. It will pick up from the audience, so it was great that people got up and introduced themselves because it will be able to pick that up without having to have somebody come forward. The camera system, however, was a little bit of a snag. For whatever reason, the new technology wouldn't work with our outdated recording equipment, which is phase two of this upgrade project. So they had to put the old camera back in place just to get it to record functionally for the zoning board meeting last week. Um, timing really became an issue. I think they were in here working in the space until about five thirty. Nancy stayed with them and the zoning board was subject to meet at seven o'clock that night, so it was a hurry up and make something work. So, um, just because we had a lot of meetings scheduled for this week between planning board Wednesday, this meeting tonight, CIP, um, I had meet in conference room two. Um, we, we're just waiting for the board and committee meeting schedule to kind of free up, so they can come in and finish up what they need to do, figure out what's going on with that. And, um, then we will be for the most part good to go. Um, as we branch out, we actually have it set up so that we can add a secondary camera to the system, so when there is public speaking, rather than, like I said, having them stand up, come to a podium or the table, um, we can actually interface it so that when that person speaks, the second camera can go back to the audience, so we can kind of see some.
Split screen?
We can do split screen, yes. So then, we have some technology upgrades coming up, but with technology updates, it, it becomes the, the pain of the learning the program and actually just trying to get it to function right as we piecemeal through the project, so.
Basically going from like a beta to three point O.
Yes, and then we have to still scale it back to beta a little bit just because of our cable franchise agreement and how we broadcast to Channel twenty-two.
I love this. I'm so used to the microphone, though. Several times I tried to speak into my cup.
Uh, so the other additional.
I don't know if anyone noticed, but.
The other additional you'll see is we do have two speakers mounted up in the ceiling, so that will actually provide feedback from that microphone to the audience, so if there's anybody soft spoken, sometimes I tend to be, I know John tends to be as well, um, that will help the audience kind of hear what they're actually.
So are they on now?
They're not.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, how are they working?
Uh, that's, that's all part of the, uh, once we get all of the program up and running, it'll be good, but we are at least, we should be of sound audio quality to the viewers at home on Channel twenty-two, and then when we upload the live feed to YouTube tomorrow.
That won't create feedback.
Well, here's the thing. Zoning board meeting, there was feedback, and I'm not really sure what that is, but there, there are frequencies and things that can be changed in the setting, so again, I think this is all in the final, fine tuning that still needs to take place. So, right now, we're heard. It's not, I mean, it's a slight hum. It does sound like a power feedback if you go back and watch the zoning meeting from last week. Um, but again, like, I'm, I'm hopeful that that will be cleared out when everything is finally up and running the way that it should be.
A long and winding road. Thank you for sticking with it.
It has been a long, drawn out process.
What about the picture that you picked down and, uh?
That'll go back up as soon as I patch the paint. I, we, we had, we had some, I, I didn't wanna put holes in the wall, so I put a, um, adhesive mount up there and it didn't hold the painting and everything fell down, and then it ripped the paint with it, so. We, we've got a little patching and repairing to do before the picture goes back up. Um, so moving on, um, I reached out to, after we didn't receive any real interest to the RFP that I circulated to paint the recycling center, I reached out to a few painting contractors just to get quotes. Um, again, with the ideal that, you know, are we going to be over the, the requirement to put it out for formal proposal, or can we possibly get somewhere, you know, to fall within our purchasing policy, maybe get a couple of just random quotes? Um, I was successful. I was able to get three quotes. Um, the first one came in at nine thousand dollars, and then I had two others between ten and fourteen thousand dollars for painting the recycling center.
Thank you.
Um, so I decided to go with, um, the lower contractor, which is a company called Quality Painting. I believe he's out of Deerfield. That was the one that came in at nine thousand dollars, and his approach to take care of the recycling center was to give it a good power wash all over, including the, the parts of the building that haven't been treated with paint in the past. And, um, give it a good, fresh, thick coat of paint. So that's the process that's starting today. Quality painting.
Is he priming at first, just painting?
Um, I believe there, there were sections that needed to be primed that hadn't been touched, but other than that, it would just be painting over. So that process was starting today. I don't know how long it was gonna take, but I know that the highway department had to go up there and remove the glass so that they could get that, that end of the building. Um, but it is going to be completed while the recycling center is closed, just so we don't have any interruption to the already busy flow of people visiting the recycling center.
What color is it all?
Um, I think it's more of a gray.
Oh, okay.
What'd you say, green?
Nottingham green, no.
Nottingham.
I was gonna say forest green.
No, unfortunately, like, when you get into colors, you're, you're at a higher risk for fade over time, so it's, right now, if you look at it, it's kind of like a dark gray, but it was once blue-ish. So now we're focusing more on the gray.
But it's held up for a lot of years.
It has held up for a lot of years, and we're hoping that this does as well. But, again, there are, um, as we previously discussed, the building still needs some additional attention. We have a wall that needs to be refastened in the back of the garage, just from years of pushing bales of cardboard and plastic overflow in there. It's pushed the wall out. So, uh, Steve and the rest of the, I'll refer to him as the Public Works Group because it's a little bit more focused than the roads right now, but um, when their schedule allows them to, they're gonna go up and just make sure that those areas are, are refastened, and, you know, if there's additional siding that needs to be taken care of, they're going to take care of that, uh, which will be a great cost savings to town. But again, as their schedule allows, so.
Anderson Way looks great, by the way.
Great, I'm glad to hear.
Did it get greater?
It did.
It were prompt. Uh, and, and the expectation was, they had left, um, a load of gravel up there to put under the tin can container when that was removed for last recycling, and they left Steve's roller up there, the highway dep, not the highway department, the recycling center staff was going to take care of that, but I guess they addressed everywhere up top, but didn't really address the road. And I don't know if that was maybe like a, a speed control measure, but I understand it was.
Kids are looking a lot better.
Nothing bounced out of my truck, so it was great.
They are. They're, they're doing great up there. I mean, the facility is really cleaned up. Yes, the road has been repaired.
So he's ready to.
Full speed ahead.
It was named after.
Uh, there was actually a question about that reference. They were like, where is Anderson Way? Right where the saint, the sign is. Uh, just far as some updates, we did receive full reimbursement for the new Motorola portable radios that were acquired by the um, Fire Rescue Department through the Assistance to Firefighters grant, so, uh, that project has been closed out. All funds have been received, so um, that is a wonderful thing, and I know that they.
Where, where did we replace Chris?
The portable radios at the fire department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I've received some interest in the Land Use Clerk position since Alana Ketti's resignation. The office was scheduled to be, uh, closed last week because she was on a planned vacation. Um, so it was kind of business as usual, but right now we still don't have anybody in that position. Um, I reached out to Blair Haney, who's our Stratford Regional Planning Circuit Rider, and then the chairs of, the chairs and the vice chairs of both the planning board and the zoning board. Because as I was looking at the position, um, we've, we've kind of evolved from the need for the Land Use Clerk to be present at those meetings where we're doing minutes transcription remotely by video, and we've been doing that now for about a year and a half. Um, so my question to those various boards is, is it important for your Land Use Clerk to be there, or would you rather have them interfacing with the applicant, the applicants as they come in and just making sure that all of their decisions and agendas and all of that clerical stuff is carried out? And that seems to be the general consensus. Um, I don't have feedback yet from the zoning board, but I did get it back from the planning board and the circuit rider, so I am going to change the advertisement for that job and remove the evening meeting requirement. That might open it up for more opportunity for somebody that's looking for like mother's hours or, you know, somebody, you know, part-time, limited, but we can be flexible on what the office hours are. We just want to make sure that there is interfacing with, um, Dale, the Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer, uh, for anything that they need to interact with him on, but then also be here and available when the contractors are coming in to fill out their applications and be reasonably available to the public like the rest of the town services are, so. Um, I did have limited interest, and I will reach out to the applicants that I did receive and just kind of let them know of the update and see if it's any more of incentive for them to pursue the position, but with that being said, if anybody knows anyone out there that might be looking for a Land Use Clerk position, obviously, um, Land Use, planning, zoning, any type of experience with that would be helpful, although it's not required. Alana has it pretty well set up that she came up with a procedural guideline that somebody can kind of come in and say, you know, pretty much get everything mapped out and done, so, um, but for the time being, between Blair and myself and my office staff, we're just kind of making things happen. Just because it is very important to comply with deadlines, application deadlines, and noticing requirements, I would like to get the position filled. Um, so outside of that, I met with two additional HVAC companies who evaluated our air conditioning systems here at the community center, as well as the library. Their quotes are incoming, but I've not received them yet, and I will circulate them to you upon receipt. Um, at that point, once we know what we're looking at, then, you know, we'll have to determine which path we're going for replacement, whether it's replacing our existing units with the new refrigerant systems, or potentially another option such as putting in mini splits, but again, like, until I have their recommendations, it's too soon to tell. Uh, we did have an issue last week where one of the units froze up in the food pantry. Um, there was a condensation pan and it had overflowed, so it wiped out a couple of ceiling tiles in the food pantry. Steve was nice enough to come by and get those replaced for Shelley after everything was thought out and restarted and functioning properly, so we, we do have continuing issues, and we're just continuing to get through the best we can. Unfortunately, nobody's dying of heat exhaustion, so between the systems that are working, we're just, you know, trying to keep airflow throughout the building and try to keep the exterior doors from letting the cold air escape, so. Um, good efforts by all. And, um, just my last piece of announcement, I received a letter of resignation from Steve Ross. Um, he served as a per diem employee of the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department, and his last shift was in June two thousand twenty-four. And I think the only other thing that I have for you, it was pretty light on correspondence, other than that, uh, the planning board voted to approve Kevin Bassett, which is seventy twenty-five LLC Channel Street subdivision with conditions. One of the condition involves that the town and the applicant agree to a road maintenance agreement. The agreement basically says the town has permission to go onto private property to conduct road maintenance, such as tree removal, drainage ditch maintenance, or other related activities. This was one of the things that was brought up during the public hearing. Um, the town will give the landowner reasonable notice prior to any work commencing unless it's an emergency situation, and the agreement, so the agreement has been drafted. I run it through a legal review process. Um, Kevin Bassett has also reviewed it. It's now ready for acceptance by the town, and then also, um, by Kevin Bassett as a condition, so you have a draft copy. I have an official copy here that can be signed if you have no changes to it, if you wanna pass that down to Tim. And I would just be looking for a motion to accept that agreement uh, with Tim signing as the chair of the select board. I'm sorry, I don't have that motion for you.
I'm verifying, you had over here these have the red.
So those were the, um, those were additions that Kevin Bassett had added after he reviewed the document. So he, he's, what he's.
Sorry, twenty-five foot right of way.
It's a twenty-five foot right of way, but he's stating that outside of the twenty-five foot, he would be willing to agree to it.
Right, right, which makes sense.
Right.
So he's, he's giving us.
If we had the right of way, we didn't need a road maintenance.
Correct.
Plan, so I get what he's doing. I was just kinda.
So he, he's giving us a little bit more than that twenty-five foot right of way.
This was just a little final job of the planning board people that didn't get there.
So, the, the only thing I, the only problem I actually have with this, I mean, I know, I think this is great, this is good, but it should also include Dolph Dam Road, which is the side of that property that is undetermined, 'cause that was not discussed.
But that wasn't part of the subdivision.
Right, well, it, no, technically, it is part of the subdivision because it's abutting that subdivision.
Actually, you're like, it comes down to that.
Right. It's part of that subdivision.
Did you bring this up at the planning board?
I wasn't, that was the one I was absent.
Oh, that was the one you missed, okay.
So, I was absent, but like, it, you know, it's like.
I believe the planning board put there that there was a condition. I think we have some time, so if that's something that you wanna add back in, if that's the consensus of the board.
It should include that part too, because, you know, at least, 'cause that road is, who knows what the width of that road.
Seventy twenty-five LLC can only sign off on the property that is actually theirs.
Right, right.
So as long as that section that you're talking about is still encompassed within its property.
Correct. I mean, it's not, not all of Dolph Dam Road, but there goes along that whole one side.
Yeah, but Kevin probably doesn't own any of that.
No, I think, um, he, at least probably to the center line technically.
Yeah, but you can't.
Yeah.
So.
So I don't know, I don't know if that, I don't know if that matters.
Fifty percent road maintenance.
I don't know, I don't know if that matters or whatever. It's like, you know, it's a public way, so it may not matter.
All of those roads don't have.
Right, and it was just something that's still not clear because we focus so much on channel.
Well, because.
It got missed.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of.
Right.
In the middle.
Right, 'cause it, 'cause channel became, it became channel because of the whole renaming thing, and that's where this all developed from. It wasn't really looked at from the subdivision and what roads the subdivision touches. So.
I mean, that sounds like a separate agreement.
Right, right, no, I, I, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the way this is. I was just wanting to talk about the missing piece.
There's sixty days to execute the agreement, so if you think that that's something that we need to put back, I can. There is time. I received this document on June thirtieth.
But does Kevin even have the legal authority to sign off on something like that?
I don't know.
Or to be separate.
I don't know. I don't know how that part works. I was not at that meeting.
There's more than.
I'm pulling up the map now.
Sorry.
I'm probably.
He doesn't own, but he doesn't own a cross Dolph Dam Road.
You're good for that.
I have to pay the other landowners.
Yeah.
Actually, wait.
Yeah, he, he does own.
I think he does own the cross Dolph Dam Road too.
In.
Oh, does he?
He owns the side of it, that, that side.
Yeah, he owns both sides of it, right?
Oh, both sides.
Yeah, I think so. No, not the whole thing, but where his property is, he owns both sides, I believe.
Yeah, for about two tenths of a mile.
Yeah.
I'm sure. But I guess to, to your point, I mean, we can go into it, John. I don't think we need to right now.
Right, no, right, exactly, this line.
But I, I, I think we would need to have some sort of agreement with other landowners in that portion, 'cause it's not just the, the portion that if he does own a portion of that, it's.
Well, we talk about the portion that he owns. That's really all that matters at this point.
Downstream, there's several other landowners.
Ripper Channel, Dolph Dam Road, right? Yeah, see, he owns, right, so from this line, he owns both sides of Dolph Dam Road. This is the subdivision, so it really only applies, it should apply from here to here.
Right.
But all was discussed was this road here, not this piece, which should be in play as well. This is really the only part you can talk about. This part to this part. 'Cause here's your subdivision.
So is that all encompassed on map seventy lot twenty-five? Because if that's the case, then it takes care of.
All map seventy lot twenty-five. So. If, if that. So if, if that covers it.
So because it's, it's referencing the subject property as map seventy lot twenty five.
Right.
Can we just, I guess, before we sign this, is just clarify with Mr. Bassett that he understands our understanding that it extends on to Dolph Dam Road.
We could do that, and then I can just bring this back up. I think, I think for timing purposes, if we table this until your August fourth meeting, I can get clarification on that and still be within the execution timeframe.
Okay, that, that's, works with me.
Um, I have nothing further. I do need a non-public under ninety one A three two A and C, please.
We still got an assessment that we got to deal with.
Yes. I didn't identify it on your agenda, so.
So let's make a motion to, uh, approve an attempted cut wood or timber on map forty lot fourteen.
I'll second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, actually, I'm just for next meeting. Obviously, the road agreement that we were just discussing.
We'll also have, hopefully by that time, the updated list of tax-deeded properties for review from the tax collector, as well as some feedback from possibly conservation and planning board for the existing properties that you've had that were acquired by tax deed.
And we'll have those prior to the meeting.
Yes.
Will you be here at the August eighteenth meeting?
Still trying to figure out my work schedule. I'm not ignoring you. It's, there's a lot in flux right now, so.
I feel like you're ignoring me.
I'm not.
Which date? August eighteenth?
I'll try, I, I have to work on my. Because as it was, I got in here and just shy of seven, so.
So I'll just have to throw it out there that, because I, I can't attend that meeting, and Charlotte can't either.
Maybe you can get a better idea at your next meeting and figure out if we need to postpone it or reschedule it.
August eighteenth. Just trying to be proactive.
August fourth. That one's fine.
Any public comment? Mr. Anderson? Did you like the improvements to your road? Is that what you wanted to comment about?
Gary Anderson, fifty guy road. So Ellen had sent a communication to the facilities, past facilities group. And so I thought I'd drop in and just kind of pick board's brain about maybe what you're thinking or, or, and if I'm catching you off guard, I understand that. That's fine too, but.
I think the, the intent of the committee was to basically keep up with that, not just that list, but going forward is.
Help prioritize.
Yeah, help prioritize the list and then make recommendations, whether it be to the board for CIP. Or just as we can, as you continue to see other issues. So rather than waiting every ten years to say, wow, we've got a bunch of stuff going on, is just continuously look for improvement.
So just ongoing kind of watch over.
Right, or if there's other projects that the board decides to pursue. You know, whether it be something with the back of the building or, you know, whatever it might be, is that maybe that facilities committee could help assist with some options.
Gary, what's your official name with that committee?
Pardon me?
Town facilities. Town facilities. Yeah, the Advisory Facilities Committee, I can do this.
Yeah, Advisory Facility Committee.
Advisory Facilities Committee. So we should set a meeting date.
That's the name of it.
And reelect you chair.
So, um, well, I had chaired in the past and I'm hoping to do that again.
It's fine for me.
If the rest of the group is okay with that and.
So I think it's, it's Eric has agreed, you, myself.
John Decker.
John, oh, good, John.
Uh, the only one that I did not hear back from was, um, Paul Delair.
Oh.
And arbitrary for his past.
So we'll, we'll do what we can.
And I don't think we're looking for maybe as in depth of a report, or maybe we are. I think it's like, look at facilities, some high hitters.
Just keeping up.
And if you see something small that we can tell to Ellen to get Steve Rollins to maybe like look and help corral quickly. It's just sometimes the people in certain facilities don't notice ongoing exterior problems. You know, like the library staff is categorizing books. They don't know if there's a hornet's nest the size of a basketball up top, you know, like.
Soon.
That's true. But I think that's what we're like, so that should make it a little bit easier for the group, you know, do we don't need a twelve page document? Just like look at it and help us log, like the old fire station, we're renting it right now. What's our long term thing? And when, um, Alan was here, he was like, if you put a half a million dollars in it, it might be savable. And we're like, I don't know if that's necessary either. So there's got to be a give and take on what we want to do. On some of the older buildings, it's making sure, like somebody posted a picture of just beams that maybe had old beetle damage or something like that, but they had already been sistered up. Right, the powder, but they've already been sistered up, so really it's not an issue. So just getting that expertise in there, these buildings are safe. Because we're not crawling in all the spaces all the time. I mean, we've done tremendous work on the back of this building and hopefully we continue moving it forward. I think that's.
Just to have, um, you know, the, the subject matter expertise to help with some of pulling together RFPs. You know, just having some of that available. I, I mean, I can pull one up all day, but whether or not it's.
Offline, maybe I might be, be able to help in that area as well, so.
Look at the scope of the work.
I think if we look at our original document too, we'll be able to, you know, tick off some of the things that have gotten done and.
There, there have been some improvements, maybe not the way that the committee really envisioned, but with any budget and other constraints, exactly.
There have been some creative solutions. That's been good, and they're just keeping it, yeah, in the forefront, I think.
Yeah, good.
So we'll work on, put something, something together and pull people together again.
Do you want to take the lead to reach out to the, all of the interested parties to set up the first meeting since you were the chair prior?
Sure you do.
I mean, any input we have, you know, from you guys is, is great.
Charlotte, Eric Danus. John Decker.
Yeah.
Triple Decker.
Triple Decker, snowmobile Decker. And Gary Anderson.
And then you said somebody else too.
Um, Paul Delair. We did not hear back from him.
So he was, he didn't respond at all, so he's not a no, he's not a yes.
Did that answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Gary.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Any other public comment? So we will be moving into non-public. After non-public, we'll, um, rejoin the meeting and adjourn. There'll be no more topics discussed.
Make a motion and move it into non-public per RSA ninety one dash A colon three two A and C.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Hi, Steve Welch. Hi, John Decker.
Hi, Tim Davio.
Hi, Mike Sherwin.
Hi, Charlotte Fife.
Good night, Nottingham.